Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Triston.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record, excuse me, let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Acting Corporation Council Rich Barrios without a salute to the flag.
So, Min Delory, since you got the flag in the background, please leave.
Hands over heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is the grandest, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, well, welcome. And I guess we'll start with our City Managers' Report.
Good evening, everyone. The first thing I want to say is thank you all for the hard work that you helped us with the budget and that the budget is now online. And what I want to let the public know that this year, the budget was just a little bit different. In the past, it's always been the City Managers' Budget. But this year, with the new council and then with myself and the Comptroller's Office, we worked individually with the council members to go over the budget and so that we would all be on the same page with what's going on with us right now, with the deficits that we have and that what we're looking for in the future. Everyone knows that there were layoffs, I'm sure by now. Originally, we had about 143 people that were laid off that were part-time for savings of about a half a million dollars. We also, for this budget, will be laying off approximately about 24 people who are saving about a million five without benefits. So that's about a $2 million savings is going into the budget. The budget was done very realistically, meaning that we took a very conservative approach in looking at the revenue, we took a conservative approach, looking at the expenditures, and the goal is to start building the city back, the fund balance, back to a positive fund balance because it is currently in a negative and it has been decreasing every year. And so, again, I just want to say thank you. Many believe that the budget was really done all by the City Manager and all the layoffs were all done by the City Manager. And I want people to know that the layoffs in turn were dealt with with the City Corporation Council, the Civil Service, and the CSE Union. And despite what some people may think, the layoffs were done by title, not by person. And so, we only had the title of the job and we went through it and they looked through seniority and nothing was done to or to one particular person because no one knew, especially me, who the people were. And as we shared the information to the council, that was also shared by title only. And then we went through everything so and went through all the cuts that we had so that everybody would be on the same page. And unfortunately, we had to come to a point where we would have to lay off because the city could no longer fund or could no longer pay for everything that we needed to pay without having extensive borrowing or raising property tax to double-digit figures. And nobody wanted to see that. That's all I have because it's all been budget for the last two weeks. And so, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And there'll be a budget hearing with a more detailed presentation on the budget at the first meeting in May, which is May 5th. They may fix, it'll be a presentation explaining the budget, go into much more detail, and the public will get to provide input. So with that, I guess I'll do a little update on some COVID-19 tests and some information. Basically, at the state level, the governor has ordered that the schools and nonessential businesses are now going to stay closed through May 15th. We're getting pushed out a little further, obviously getting closer to Memorial Day. The governor has also issued two new executive orders that require all people in New York to wear masks or face coverings in public, including when taking public or private transportation or riding in for higher vehicles like taxis or Uber or anything like that. Masks or face coverings are now required. Regarding starting to reopen things, the governor has made it clear that they're going to be taking a regional approach for reopening things. They're doing it in conjunction with neighboring states, New York, Jersey, Connecticut, some of the others. But if one state does something, we don't want to drive people to the other states, which of course, I guess, I was going to maybe bring it up later, but this probably is a time, you know, people are probably wondering about what's going on with the beach. And the simple fact is, we don't know yet because it's really the state that is trying to be ultimately kind of ruling here on what goes on because, like I said, they're mandating a regional approach. We are preparing as if the beach will open normally. So should that happen, we will be ready, but the simple fact is, we just don't know yet. But we are preparing for the best. As far as the county level, as of yesterday, there were 31,079 positive COVID-19 cases in the county and 1,390 deaths, unfortunately. Specific to Long Beach, we've had 551 positives in Long Beach. Quite frankly, the only community on the South Shore in Nassau County that has more positives than Long Beach is Freeport. We far exceed other South Shore communities in the number of positive cases. Additionally, if you've perhaps seen the article, nursing homes are now being raised as hotbeds for this awful pandemic. And a nursing home in Long Beach has had 22 deaths in one nursing home. That is the highest of any nursing home in Nassau County here in Long Beach. So when people are asking, why is the boardwalk still closed and things like that, that's the reason why. This is about people's lives now. Well, not now, it has been, but this is about people's life. So I get the people that, you know, I get emails, we all get emails from people. I have one person complaining about the boardwalk being closed because it was bad on their knees when they were jogging to run in the street at the sidewalk. I don't even know how to address a comment like that because, quite frankly, people's lives are at stake and we all have to be thinking about the greater good right now and thinking about more than ourselves, but our family, our neighbors, and our fellow residents. And the simple fact is, the sooner we beat this thing down, the faster we can get back to normal. And I've said this before, it's, you can hunker down now or you can hunker down in July and August. Let's do it now so we can get our summer. So with that, I'll come down off my soapbox and I guess we can move on with the meeting.
Okay. Item number one has been taken off the calendar. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract for masonry work at various locations throughout the city of Long Beach on an as-needed basis with the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, is Commissioner Miranda on?
No, Joe is.
Mr. Fabizio, we'll take him. Hello, everybody. I hope everybody's safe and healthy. Yes, the requirements contract, a little better with Capital Industries, the amount of $211,000. We use this requirements contract to do masonry work all around the city at various locations. It's generally work that our city's street maintenance department is too big for or is, or they're too busy to do. They generally do an outstanding job. Just for an example, like, I don't know if you're familiar with the Bank of America parking lot between Riverside and Edwards, like, we just paved that through our asphalt overlay contractor. Well, the sidewalks and curbs in that wall are really bad as well. Now, that's a pretty big job for our guys. So this is the type of work we would give the Capital Industries under this contract. And there's funding available in the capital plan for this work, this contract.
All right. Any questions from the council members? I just have one question before you tell. How do these prices of this contract compare to what we paid up to this point?
I mean, they're fairly reasonable. I mean, they're actually, I don't have the last year in front of me, unfortunately, but I mean, those prices are definitely reasonable.
Okay.
And Capital Industries worked with us before and they do a fantastic job.
Okay. Thank you. We didn't get any questions from the public on this item, so I guess we can move on.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to amend the current contract for asphalt overlay work at various locations throughout the city on as-needed basis.
All right. Joe, you're up again.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, this is, we have an annual contract that, so we can perform overlays throughout the city. The current contract that has that contract is work ahead. I don't know if you noticed throughout town, but they've been doing a lot of work all over. We just, for example, did the two parking lots. We got one opposite Bank of America, one opposite Belize Beach Cafe, between Magnolia and Northham Royalton. And I think, hopefully, everybody's really happy with that. So this money is basically, take money from some other diswaying of stuff, parking lot lines, that the capital plan is kind of combining and basically use the one line for our asphalt overlay contractor. And John, you'll appreciate, we're going to do work on Heron Street. We've been dealing with Dr. Isbell. That's one of the proposed projects we're going to do with this overlay that street end with chronic flooding. So I'd like for you to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the council? And I think Councilman Delory's got a question.
Mr. Fabizio, it was a great job on parking lots opposite at City G and Belize Beach Cafe. And one question I have is, when these parking lots are overlaid, does the same company do the striping as well?
Actually, it's a subcontract that is retained by the general contractor that does the striping in this case. So otherwise, he hired a contractor as a sub and we paid him to do it under the overlay contract.
Under the overlay. Would that contractor be the same one who would do other type of parking, striping in, let's say, boulevards or anything like that?
In this case, striping isn't incorporated in the asphalt overlay contract, so it would be up to the general contractor who he wants to use.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we can move on.
Okay, item four is a resolution authorizing settlement for certiorati proceedings for 640 West Broadway. I will unmute Mr. Flammer, who is on the phone.
Hi, good evening, council. This is a tax certiorati settlement between the city and the Beach Terrace Care Center, which is a 182-bed nursing home on 640 West Broadway. It settles six years, 2014 through 19, with a three-year moratorium until 2022. That means they can't file grievances for three years. During negotiations, we came to a stalemate. I outsourced for a dependent appraisal, which supported our settlement. It's a reduction in AV from 215 to 164, which equates to a market value of 6.5 million to 5 million and a lump sum refund of $50,000. There is no interest on the refund. Any questions?
Ray, could you just, just real quick, because I know I had this question, that the assessment isn't necessarily based on just square footage, as a couple other factors that are taken into account. Could you just briefly explain that?
Okay, nursing homes are a little specialty of commercial properties, which are based on the income approach. Nursing homes are based on their reimbursement for Medicare and Medicaid costs that are capitalized to derive an income approach valuation. You know, commercial properties are valued in income, residential properties are based on market sales. So that's always the difference between what something would sell for and what they're valued. And nursing homes would be valued in use, it's not based on what it could sell for at highest and best use, it's based on the value in how it's used, as per New York State laws.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay. Did you get one question from the public? Already taxed refund, $50,000, how many tax years will it include? I think you answered that, Ray, but it's fiscal 14, 15 through 19, 20, correct?
That is correct. Plus a three-year moratorium.
So that'd be six years.
Yeah.
All right. And I guess that's it. So next item.
One second. And finally, item number five is a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement program for the next five years and authorizing publication of the general summary of the proposed budget for year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and notice of public hearings thereon. This item is for publication only. Hearings will be held May 5th and May 19th at 7:00 p.m. Onto the voting portion. Item two is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract for masonry work at various locations throughout the city of Long Beach on an as-needed basis with the lowest responsible bidder. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Karen.
Karen, I think you're still muted.
You're muted, Karen?
Yes.
Thank you. President Bendo.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to amend the current contract for asphalt overlay work at various locations throughout the city on an as-needed basis. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing settlement of certiorati proceedings for 640 West Broadway. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item five is a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement program for the next five years and authorizing publication of the general summary of the proposed budget for year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and notice of public hearings thereon. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Sorry, who was that?
Hello.
Second.
I will.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Triston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, I guess on to good and welfare. We got some questions for that. Caputina asks, what's the latest updates for the Stupple Block project? Engel Berman is the developer for that. They sought and received something called a preliminary inducement resolution from the Nassau County IDA. What that essentially means is that all it does is it begins negotiations with the IDA and the developer about any potential tax abatements or exemptions that they're looking for on the project. If you went to any of the public meetings they held around the city, they were quoting the figure $50 million is what they were looking for, but I guess they'll be in the negotiating phase now with the IDA about that. The city has reached out to the IDA just to make sure that they do hold public hearings here in Long Beach and that no vote will take place on the project until the pandemic recides, because they keep having a public hearing here in Long Beach. As of now, the project is what's called as of right, which means they do not require any zoning variances, so it's not expected that they'll be going in front of a zoning board for any approvals, because they'll be doing it in accordance with the current zoning code. So right now, we're finding it in a waiting state, we're tracking to see what goes on between the IDA and Engel Berman, and we'll keep you apprised of that. We're also probably going to be asking the developer, even though, like I said, they did a number of presentations, civic association meetings and places around town, we're probably going to ask them to come back again at a city council meeting to do a presentation there as well, just in case anybody else. So we'll keep you up to date on that. Same person asks, are discussions continuing with new COVID-19 requirements? Yes. I mean, obviously, we have our OEM, our Office of Emergency Management, been activated and manned, so we're continuously monitoring the situation. We're in contact with the county, the state, and all the other appropriate agencies, you know, and adjusting as needed. We're needed putting in requests with the county OEM for personal protective equipment for our first responders. So it's been a fair amount of activity, tracking the activities. As I said earlier, though, the governor has made it pretty clear that any easing of social distancing or opening up of any facilities is going to be a reasonably coordinated effort. So we're not going to be doing this by ourselves, so we're kind of operating under that right now. So we continue to monitor and hope for the best. Next, Lou DeBose. Can the city paint designated bike lanes along Broadway again and have the street sweeper sweep as well and take care of some potholes and rough areas in the road? So the police department did go out today and inspected the bike lanes earlier, and yeah, they came back and said they do need to be repainted, so that's going to be done this spring. The street sweeper is out daily, so we're going to look talk to the Department of Public Works to make sure Broadway is getting done. The pothole repairs, that's just a continuous kind of ongoing process. They're ongoing. A more comprehensive repatement is not scheduled this year right now for that section of the road, but the potholes are being addressed. And Lou also asked, can the city contact the town of Hempstead and have them do the same things on Lido Boulevard? Yep, we'll reach out to the town and the county and see if that's something they can do. Susan Moran asks about addressing the Governor Cuomo mandated laws on wearing masks. Mentioning that a local food establishment is still preparing food and interacting with customers without masks, and some customers were not wearing masks either. So basically, we contacted that restaurant today and they were spoken to and hopefully they now see the error of their ways and will do better. Heather Licata was asking about companies that are using leaf blower, that, okay, that they're basically disturbing people and are banned. So quite frankly, this is the first time we hear of this issue. We're going to look into that. We'll find out what other communities are doing and if this stuff needs to take or shouldn't take it. So we will look into that. Same, Heather also asked about, I guess, the contractors parking on the wrong side of the street and the canals, that it's creating some traffic, parking issues, you know, people being able to get by and stuff like that. So we've informed the police department of that and they will be checking. And if you are witnessing that, obviously, the police aren't everywhere at once, so if you are witnessing a situation like that, please call the police emergency, not emergency number, which is 516-431-1800. Then that's 431-1800, and they can send someone over there to rectify the situation. Marion Adams is asking about beach passes. Last year, they went on sale in May and wants to know how much beach revenue was collected in May of 2019 and June of 2019. It was, for the two months, it was about $2 million, slightly over $2 million. She's also asking if the boardwalk reopens, how will enforcement of social distancing work? That's really going to depend on what guidance you get from the state and county. The boardwalk is being pulled right now. I imagine it would continue, but again, depending on the guidance, the social distancing guidance. Obviously, it's a challenge. I mean, anybody that was up there since before we closed it kind of realizes why we closed it. It was packed up there and social distancing was not going so well. So like I said, we'll be monitoring, taking guidance from the state and the county, but keep in mind, this is also about not putting our law enforcement personnel into dangerous situations either and having to deal with large crowds right now. Robert Zaminsky is asking a question about item one, about the deficiency note, which was removed from the agenda, so we'll address that at the meeting when that takes place. And let's see. And he's also asking about the Office of the State Comptroller, or Corrective Action Plan, for the audits that the state comptroller did. What's going on with those? So the city's been in communication with the state comptroller's office. Obviously, things are in a little bit of flux right now, given everybody's working remotely, so we have been communicating with them. They have been worked on and they're going to be submitted soon. Cindy Uker, oh, hi, Cindy. Can you advise if the stop, the stop growing out polluting program that had been scheduled for this past Sunday will be rescheduled for a later date? Yeah, we're working with the town of Hempstead. They've agreed to reschedule it. We just don't have that new date yet, so as soon as we know that, we'll let you know. Robin Donovan wants to know, what steps are you taking to recover the overpayments of $500,000 to ten current and former employees from the 2017-18 fiscal year, based on Tom DiNapoli's office? So right now, there is a outside law firm conducting a very detailed, vigorous investigation. They're in close contact with the appropriate authorities, and honestly, beyond that, I really can't comment at this point, but it is being worked on. Michael Jannon, the city, oh, can the city, about the benches on the boardwalk, do we know when they'll be repaired? um, these layoffs were a financial cost-cutting measure, so, uh, that's not the intention at this time to bring people back, um, so, let's see. And also, she's asking, there are raises in the bud, many large raises in the budget. Uh, why are some people getting ten to fourteen percent raises? I'm not aware, uh, I, we, we look, we're not aware of any large raises in the budget. There, I mean, there is the contractual raises that the city's obligated to give. Now, what you might be seeing is in the union contracts, there are things called step increases. So at certain years of service for the city, you jump into a higher salary bracket. So what you may be seeing, uh, step increases, people, uh, going from one step to another. But other than that, any, any raises at all in the budget are just the, the normal annual contractual raises where required, there's nothing beyond that. And, uh, with that, that would be last questions. So thanks for joining us and I guess we don't have to say get home safe, but, uh, everyone have a good night and take care.
Stay safe.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.